...
Thank you, if you please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, with that, we will get right into our old business, which is a continuation of the proposed 2014-15 school district budget presentation.
It will begin with Mr. McBride and Mrs. McCann.
Sounds like a plan.
I saw Mr. Farley there.
He's making copies of...
Frank, I think maybe have you sit on that side, because there's a mic that they put out for you. Excellent.
This is...
So this is the handout that looks like this.
Gotcha. Everybody see their handout? All right, guys, whenever you're ready.
Actually, here comes Mr. Farley.
Here comes Mr. Farley.
So as we often do, we'll do this as a team. Again, questions are welcome at any point in time. The first slide for you to see the difference in the budgets between fiscal year 2014 and 2015. I should mention again, Kim McCann, Mrs. Steve Fountain, and Mr. Kevin Farley. Next, I have enrollment numbers currently.
Yes.
As of today.
As of today.
Yes.
And just that, that is always done by credits. So that's why sometimes you see a little bit of a larger number, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. So again, when we do grades, it's always done by credits, in case you're wondering why. That's beautiful, thank you.
Does that help?
That is a lot easier.
See you squinting over there.
So when you say credits, is that, that's not students? Is that three hundred and thirty-three, thirty-six?
Yes, it is, it is an actual, each one of those is an actual body. It's just that sometimes when people think freshman, you can think of first year.
Okay.
So some kids, it might be, they're getting better and they're trying hard, and this is second year lumped into about three thirty-seven.
Their grade level is determined by earned credits.
Okay, got it.
Maybe one thing to highlight, Frank, would be as you're thinking about your enrollment for next year, at this point, we know that we're expecting a rather large contingency of Dunbarton students. I think for the sake of the budget, we anticipated, I should mention, Mr. Lavor is not with us this evening, he wasn't feeling well. So there may be questions for Ray tonight that we'll have to wait to answer till Wednesday. But I think we assumed seventy-five kids on the revenue side where we did the projections. But if there are any things that come up about Dunbarton students, you might want to just mention that.
Thank you. And you know, I apologize, Mr. Balki, is that, is that the number, so out of X amount of students, the people who have said yes, I was just interested, have you already, have you all talked about that publicly?
The...
We have.
And maybe just as a quick summary, we had sent out ninety-seven letters to kids who are currently in grades nine, ten, and eleven. We heard back from all kids that four had indicated a preference to go on to Boe. And there were just a couple of kids that were unsure or hadn't made up, made up their mind, but there were four that definitively said they wanted to go to Boe. Several students had indicated that the lack of transportation would be a significant hardship for them to be able to remain in Goffstown. And that has been shared with the Dunbarton Board as well.
Thank you. Staff, eight administrators, and I should, in case you're wondering, who are all those people? So it's the adult ed director included in that as well, so it's Bill Ryan. One, two, three, four. On the sick front as well is Linda Hatchett, our special ed facilitator. Also not here this evening is Mr. Lavalley, our dean of students. And Laura Rogers, our guidance coordinator. Teachers, again, that's the full-time equivalent, ninety-eight point two, if it's actually a hundred bodies. And support staff, broken up into the thirty-eight prepared professionals, seven secretaries, eleven custodians, and nine kitchen staff. I believe, Mr. Balki, you've seen this in presentations before, I think it's worth reiterating. And we feel strongly that we do a very good job with the money that we are given by the taxpayers in Goffstown. And on that note, and I'll maybe let Mr. Farley speak a bit more. I believe all of you have seen these, but I think it's worth continually, continuing to show, these are the last state testing results that came out. This is the spring science kneecap test they test. So this is this year's seniors who took this last year in the spring as juniors. And a little hard to see, I hope you can see it well, every single, it's a bar graph, every single one of those little bars is a high school in the state of New Hampshire. And we are the red bar way, 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 way to the left, only a teeny bit behind. Two other pretty darn good high schools, Bedford High School in Hanover, and then there's Goffstown High School, with I believe roughly eighty-six schools below that mark. So again, we clearly feel that we're doing right by our students. One indicator. And I'll maybe mention this before, Kim clearly, I would say, is the chief financial officer of Goffstown High School. No one knows numbers better than Kim, so maybe let Kim chime in here a little, or myself, Mr. Farley, and Mr. Fountain, as well.
As we started to develop the budget with our staff in September, we really highlighted and stressed the importance of looking to maintain the current level of programming that we are offering to students. The importance of looking to assure an equitable and appropriately challenging experience for all of our students. And as Brian has shared in his presentations, maintaining clean and safe facilities. We really highlighted with our staff, our administrative team, that this is what we were looking to do. With that in mind, also really looking to balance and recognize the realities of the economic situation. And that we are a small town, and that this budget will be funded by local property taxes. And that piece as well that Brian spoke about in his presentation, the importance of working towards teaching and support staff contracts as well, and the impact that that is going to have. So as we started to put the budget together, what we really sought to do, and we hope you've seen that, is as much as possible, we really look to bring requests in as close to what they have historically been over the last three to five years. You're gonna see some slight increases as you look through this. Those increases are in the supply lines between what our actual budget is this year and what we are hoping for next year. Those requests are the same request in almost all of the departments that were made a year ago and the year before that, in terms of dollars. We have not looked to raise those requests, with the exception of a few areas where continued cost increases have impacted. We typically, in our, in our supply lines for departments, we use a hundred and fifty dollars per teacher as the guiding practice, with the exception of departments that are exceptionally supply-dependent. Our art classes, our technology education courses, our science classes, those have different needs as we go through and build those. And you will see some increases in those areas. In terms of the six forty-one lines, the textbooks, again, you're gonna see a lot of very similar things, some supplemental texts to continue to support the different courses. We have not, as you know, we have not been able to stick to the curriculum buying cycle of textbooks. And I think we are going into year four of kind of being off that cycle. So we've really tried to do supplemental replacement texts. There is a fairly heavy bump in that six forty-one line compared to what it is this year. This year, we had just a little under thirty-two thousand dollars, it's a little over fifty.
It's on page two hundred and twelve.
Two twelve. And the couple of things we would highlight there are the AP Physics and the AP US History classes. The AP classes are dependent on the designation through the college board. And the classes are audited annually by the college board. And if your audit does not meet all of the requirements, you are not allowed to use the AP designation with those classes. AP Physics and AP US History have both gone through some recent extensive curriculum changes, the tests are changing. And as we are looking for the audit, we know that the textbook expectations that go along with it will also have a change. And those texts will need to be updated for the AP designation to remain. And so you can see those costs. Based on the current offerings and the routine requests, we typically run A section of AP Physics, which is twenty-four students. AP US History, we typically see close to fifty students every single year taking it. And that is why there's the difference in the figure in the test, test costs there. Questions about either of those areas?
Maybe just to reiterate, we supported the principal's requests in all of the six eleven and the six forty-one lines. Because Goffstown High School is so much bigger and has so many more categorical areas of the six eleven, the supply lines, the cumulative impact of that contributed significantly to that increase in their budget. As well as the six forty-one line, which is the books and printed materials, we supported all of the curriculum work that the high school is pursuing. And just to repeat, many items have been put off now for three, four years or more. And we really feel like it's time to make those revisions.
In terms of equipment and furniture, a couple of big areas that we thought it was important to highlight. If you look on page two sixteen, there is almost seven thousand dollars for data interface boxes. Again, that's tied directly to the physics classes, both the AP and the college physics classes that we offer. These are, I'll just turn it over to Kevin to talk a little bit more about how this data piece works and the importance in the labs.
Anything that they do in physics in the labs in terms of measurement, whether it's motion sensors, whether it's forces, whether it's light sensors, they're done electronically now. And the, the information, the data is gathered by probes, which run through the interface boxes, which then bring all of this information to the laptops or to the desktop computers for the students to work with. This has been a standard lab piece of equipment now for a decade, and they're just old right now. Some of them have broken. Some of them don't have the USB hookups on them, they're older than USB, so they're, we've been patching them together, but they just aren't supported anymore, the software has changed. So they, they do need to be upgraded, it's a, it's a, just a essential to the labs, that's how they run the physics labs. And what we have right now is just barely limping along.
Other areas of equipment and furniture, theater lighting. As some of you may be aware, we had done some lighting work two summers ago. Been able to start the process of transitioning from incandescent to LED lighting. We have not been able to continue that in the last year, but we do think it is both a necessary and important part of the infrastructure of the theater. It would be a cost of twenty-plus thousand dollars. However, it is a process that can be done over time, the lighting does not need to be done all at once. So what we are proposing is we start a five-year cycle of planning and budgeting for a roughly five thousand dollar replacement annually. With that, there are a few other pieces in that area. We are still storing instruments in the hallway in old bookcases that were somewhat retrofitted for that purpose. There is, on page two seventeen, there is a ten thousand dollar request for instrument storage, much like what they use at the middle school, that would allow us to better use space and to better meet the, the needs of the fire department as well in maintaining that hallway as they would like to see it. You see some money there for some replacement instruments as well. Some of you will recall that for a number of years, we had a lease option that we had done with our instruments. And we have not done that now for about five years. So we are in a, in a position now where instruments, when they need to be replaced, need to be purchased. In terms of equipment and furniture, many of the library computer chairs, as you may have experienced, have reached the near end of their time with us and are, are in need of replacement. The backs are frequently falling off, and we wanna make sure that we have a quality space for kids that is also safe.
And if I were to chime in on that, because if you're sitting on these like nice relatively stable chairs and you haven't sat on one of those, it is, they're, they're, it's time. And sometimes with furniture, and I understand it, particularly during tough times, we've put off purchasing furniture. These chairs are, are ready, they're extremely tired. I don't wanna use the not safe term, they're just, they are tired, yeah.
It's used all day long.
Every single time you come in, someone's in them, and they're, it's jam-packed every sing, single day. And it's just a, it's a moving chair versus a stable one like this, so it's, they're, they're tired.
Finally, one of the other areas that we will speak to before some other folks talk about some of the other elements in this. At field trips, there is some additional money that is there to support field trips, specifically field trip transportation, which is, as you know, and as many assure of the other administrators have spoken about, the importance of the enrichment of the curriculum that goes along with some of those opportunities that our students might not otherwise be afforded. Can you speak a little bit? Athletics?
I know there was a, there were a couple areas where there were some number of changes in lands that I'd wanna just create your attention.
Athletics begins on page two two eight.
The four forty-two line, equipment rentals. The price bump on Sullivan Arena over at St. A's went up. For the team, there was only a change of seven hundred and fifty dollars. The Lions Field piece added five thousand. What we're trying to do with that is we're going, trying to get into a long-term lease with Lions Field where we take control of it and take control of the schedule of that field. And have the, you're looking at, they were trying to get to a twenty-year lease, I believe it was, Brian, when you discussed me.
Yeah, we actually haven't definitively heard back what the options are going to be, Steve. The Lions Club Board has met, and Mr. Gross has shared some information with, with me that I've shared with the Board, including a couple of letters. We've also met with the rec department and tri-town soccer and a few other interested parties. At this point, they're doing an appraisal of the land, and depending upon what the land is worth and what the potential development opportunities may be, they're going to evaluate their options beyond that. They've indicated that if the price is strong, that they would look to sell. And they would like to reinvest the money into the development of the field system over by the transfer station. But if, in fact, the land isn't worth what they're hoping it is, then they would be interested in speaking further with the school board about options which may include either a donation to the district, which is what Mr. Gross had said, or a potential lease arrangement. But at any rate, you do see a five thousand dollar increase in this budget reflecting what we're anticipating the Lions Club to be looking for from the school district.
And the other piece, thank you, and the other piece was the twenty-seven hundred for turf time. And what that is, is this time of year hasn't been as perfect weather-wise as this fall. Typically, we have team requests to get to dry land at this time of year. One part of that twenty-seven hundred dollars is to try to maintain the field and the space that we run nine varsity, or nine sports on through the year. If we ran all the games on that field at all times, we probably wouldn't even move into the maintenance of the field. So the hope is that we get money set aside for turf time to either run games, events, and/or practices at turf venues for bad weather and for opportunities for kids to have a chance to play at a venue that we're trying to get in the future. And we kind of try and provide opportunities for our students and parents and the community to get over and play a game at St. A's. If there's a practice opportunity, for instance, one just came up this week for field hockey. They were playing a team in the first round, a turf, that plays on turf constantly, our team didn't play once on turf. So the coach is asking, can we get some space to go practice on turf, so we can be prepared appropriately? So those things come up. Football, instead of sitting and playing in the mud, not being able to move, they try to get down to a campsite. And they've been asking the boosters to fund them to get down to these places to practice. This year, it hasn't been a problem, this year, there's, there's been little to none asking. But first, lacrosse in the spring, when snow's on the ground, there's no place for them to practice, unless we put them in a parking lot. So we try to get them over to, get them to turf, get them on turf.
Steve, you mentioned the booster club, I wonder if you might give just a brief synopsis, as the Board is aware that the budget does not support all of the costs associated with athletics. Would you speak just briefly about some of the contributing factors of the booster clubs and fundraising that occurs?
To give you an idea, I kind of, I slipped this up, and I, I apologize, I didn't put it on the slide, I'll give you the numbers. MDMS right now, currently, we have eleven sports equaling twenty-two teams. We have sixteen A teams and six B teams. And this fall, we had a hundred and seventy, seventy-three athletes. To those teams, we currently have eighteen district-funded positions, which means there's four that are not district-funded. We have twelve A head coaches, one assistant coach for the cross country, and five B head coaches. At the high school, we have twenty-three sports equaling fifty teams. There are thirty-two varsity teams, fifteen JV teams, and two freshman teams. Registrations this fall, to give you an idea how comprehensive, how many kids are touching. Three hundred and fifty registrations for fall sports, which equals twenty-nine point six, around thirty percent of our population. Currently, we have forty-two district-funded positions. Twenty-three varsity head coaches, nine assistant coaches, and ten sub-varsity coaches. We have, we have flat-out volun, some volunteer coaches that aren't booster-funded, that are just doing, to have the kids have opportunities to bowl. And the new one, bass fishing, but that's something entirely different, but it's a, we do have some just flat-out volunteers. But the others are booster-funded, they're not in the district.
Steve, we could maybe highlight a couple of your lines. Steve and I had talked about on page two twenty-eight on the fourteen twenty, three thirty-nine line. We had made a slight reduction in that, that I, I think it's fair to say that Steve was a little nervous about. But we did that based on multi-years of his actuals on that, that out of that line, we felt that that's, that cut could be made. And then on page two hundred and thirty, we did do a reduction in what Steve was asking for for replacement uniforms. Steve and I have talked about that he's prioritizing his uniform needs as we speak. And we were gonna see if we might be able to purchase some of those uniforms this year. Some of our uniforms are in really poor condition. Cross-country uniforms are, are really subpar, just in general, our, our uniforms. Again, to Mr. McBride's point, when you're making hard budget decisions over the last five years, this has been a fatality of our budget, is replacing uniforms. We're using a lot of uniforms that I think are not becoming of the caliber program that we run.
I can speak to that. My son ran cross-country this year, and he needed to wear a soccer uniform to be in the room. And white, which, you know, it, it did the trick, but you see it in practice. We, there are children who don't have uniforms, or athletes that don't even have the representation.
And they're representing our school, so if they look a mess, then we look a mess, so it's an, it's an important thing. It doesn't seem like it's all that important, maybe just on the outside, but they do go to other towns and represent our schools and our towns, so.
There's no, it's a point of pride, getting that material that's school-related, especially, you know, you start going, getting to the private world and the, and the public world. You get this other entity, the AAUs in the private world, that are, they're putting in, socking out a lot of dough to get these nice pieces of material, it makes a difference in the kids.
And we're not even talking about, you know, warm-ups and practice, we're just talking about a jersey to go on and run in.
And it's not like the parents, you could just say, well, why did the parents buy their uniforms, already buying socks and cleats and protective gear and all those kinds of things. So I know that parents are putting out a lot of money of their own, not including that uniform that we provide, so.
And parents are paying in operational cost for some of our athletics as well. So on top of the uniform and equipment components, parents are contributing other pieces that are not represented in this budget as well. So that was an area that Mr. Fountain and I, we did talk about, but it is something that we support and that we wanted to fast-track this as kind of an athletic emergency, so to speak, to, to be able to look at supporting that this year. Steve, you wanna also maybe speak briefly to Mountain View?
You have the lines in front of me.
I can get them.
You know, while Brian's looking for that, Steve, a few years ago, I believe it was you who helped compile a document which represented all the, the different amounts that parents and booster clubs provided to support the extracurriculars. It was very informative, it was very helpful. I particularly found it very helpful last year. But it is, we're a couple of years old, is it possible to have that refreshed? Is that, I mean, I, I don't have a sense for how much work went into it, but I...
Speaking of, I've been confused, whatever, whatever it needed, I can absolutely advocate, yeah.
I think...
So it does help frame, I mean, when...
It's, yeah, it's constantly, it's a constantly growing process, and it's very positive, obviously. If you look at our, and I'm not talking about we lost success, I'm talking about getting kids involved, thirty percent. And we're doing it, you know, we've got the plugging the dike, so to speak, you know, the fingers moving from one thing to another. And it's a, it's something that obviously, that we, that we highlight, we appreciate, and we know that it's affecting our students and the long run, in and out of the classroom.
And I would add to that, Mr. Farley, the board is likely aware over the years, has compiled a fair amount of statistics, not just for athletic, but kids who are involved in any co-curricular, extracurricular, theater, music, whatever it may be. And the correlation between students' engagement after school and their success in high school is compelling. And I think that's, those are statistics that Kevin has, has done over the years, showing that connection between kids being part of and connected to the school. And this goes along with the late bus too. Kids after school, idle time, that's when kids tend to have issues and the opportunity for perhaps poor choices as opposed to being engaged in something positive and healthy.
And that's definitely something we can work to compile, not just athletics, but with all of our co-curricular offerings.
And I think that's what I saw.
Yeah, and I think that is part of it in that.
Yeah, I think that's the document.
As Jenny you stated, parents of athletes are, are doing a lot to make sure their kids are equipped. And there are also, when you look at our performing arts group, for example, there are production fees that, that kids and, and parents are paying to support that and, and to support their participation in those programs. They buy their concert attire for the shows throughout the year as well, and the students participating in banding course. So there is a, there's a good deal of money that parents are putting up to have their students participate in these programs. And, and we can certainly look to pull something together and have a more comprehensive look at all of those areas.
That'd be terrific, because it is, like I said, the information's probably three years old now. It's always good to just keep your eye on, on what is actually current and accurate. That would really help. I appreciate that, thank you.
Steve, the, the Mountain View lines, just to give a brief overview. On page one-seventy-five of the middle school athletics program, line fourteen-twenty, the three-thirty-nine line. It looks like there's a thirteen thousand dollar jump in that line. Really what we've done is we've restored that to the prior budget year. Mr. Fountain will spend that much out of that line this year. We will likely deficit spend that. When we made cuts, we did cut money out of that line, but did not cut any of the sports themselves. So we will still pay for officials and referees and still continue to run our programs. And then in his six-eleven line, there is an increase. And again, over the years, as, as accounts have taken hits, the level of equipment has been compromised. And there are increases for things such as new volleyball nets. Having played on those volleyball nets over at Mountain View and having watched Mr. Maraska set them up and there are issues with the nets, it's something that's overdue and makes sense, it's time to do it. So those were requests in the Mountain View budget through athletics that we did support.
Just a little question. Game baseballs are actually over thirty bucks a case?
They're actually more, yeah. They're actually going up. They're right, the brand that the NHI uses right now, it's right around forty-eight dollars a case.
It's not a ball, a case.
Oh, a case.
Yeah, I was like, wow.
It doesn't.
I was gonna say, I've been out of baseball for a while, they can't be that much better.
The reason I mention that is it's eighteen hundred and forty-nine dollars for five dozen game baseballs.
Yeah, we, we caught that one. I, I apologize, I did question Steve on that one.
That's a nice baseball.
That's a really nice baseball.
No, that, that's an error. We had originally. I've heard of fake baseballs. Mr. Labor and I, we had a good laugh over that one already. And it was supposed to be changed. I did say to Steve, I said, where are you buying these baseballs?
Put someone in the river for real with a kayak, we can't just let them go in there anymore.
Well, it's a good job we hire kids to stand there to catch the fall balls coming back.
Could be like the San Francisco out in the, out in the little bay there. Get the guys in the net.
Except to pay for their home balls.
Yeah, there you go.
Any other questions for middle school or high school athletics? No new sports?
The, the thing that we did this fall that was okay last year was the bass fishing. It moved to the falls.
Because last year it was in the spring.
It was in the spring.
But we only, we had what, two teams of two kids?
We actually, we had over a dozen come down and show interest, which getting started a little bit later in it this year, because we had to actually secure a coach. And when we did, yes, at the end, it was, one team really of four, but we did, we're gonna, strategically, we're gonna do two and then four in the second event. We never made it to the second event.
And just to be clear, we don't have a boat, we're not renting a boat. This is something that the NHIAA provides the boat and the insurance coverage.
It was a hundred and twenty-five dollars, yeah.
I do have a question going back to page two-twenty-eight on three-thirty-nine. Just looking at current year budget seventy-seven, there was an admin reduction. And this is the line that's got the concussion testing, the trainers, professionals, officials and whatnot. How are we expecting to be able to meet the demands of this line without cutting any sports? And by reducing its allocation by seven thousand?
It's actually ninety-seven hundred. That was the line that Steve, Steve did question that. We did make that, I'm happy to go back and double-check that. But when I've spoken with the board about using actuals to make budgeting decisions for lines being adjusted up or down, that was one that we had noticed they weren't spending what they had been asking for. I will confirm that, I'll go back and double-check that one. But that was one that when Mr. Labor and I looked at it, they weren't spending all their budgeted amounts, so we brought it down. And you'll see that throughout the budget.
All right, I just was wondering if it was based on actuals or what, what that decision was based on. I didn't, I didn't see it. And like I said, it, it's a seven thousand, seventy-two hundred dollar decrease against what the current year budget is.
Yep. And again, in terms of concussion testing, those are all new requirements that we absolutely support and want to maintain the safety of our, of our student athletes. I will confirm that reduction, but I believe we had pulled the, the historical numbers on that line and he hadn't been spending it, so we brought it down.
I'm trying to remember, can anybody here remember line four-thirty-one, still on page two-twenty-eight? The athletic maintenance, prior year budget was forty-eight hundred dollars and we're now sitting up at twenty-three. I cannot for the life of me remember.
We moved the field maintenance out of building operations to athletics.
Thank you. I, I try to remember these things.
I actually think even more specifically than that, I think it was moved from a district line to a high school line and which would allow us to capture those costs through the tuition rate.
Does anybody else have any additional questions?
Any questions for Frank, Kim, Steve, or Kevin before we ask Mr. Aggett to come up?
Frank, something? If I could, I close, it's not an argument, but my, my closing minute, if, if I could. And I'll go backwards, I'll start this morning. So when I walked into school this morning, like most mornings, it is clean as a whistle in the hundred-wing hallway at eight o'clock, there's not a student in it. And the bell rang at seven fifty-six, so they're all in classes. When I walked around the halls, like almost every time I walk around the halls, the amount of focus in classrooms is exceptional. And if I were to go back to the science kneecap slide, it doesn't just happen, I say this all the time, but it's worth reiterating. There are so many caring adults working so hard. And it's just, it's not as easy as people make it look in this building, I believe, at what a job they're doing. This is the backwards piece. This weekend, had a chance to see the River Rage, which I think you've heard about. And I know some people got a chance to see. And just again, spectacular opportunities for, for kids. Right before the River Rage, I was at the cross-country meet, state cross-country meet. The boys' best finish ever, came in fifth in the state. Andy McGivern came in seventh overall in the state. Libby Jenrinthirteenth in the state, but spectacular. A little bit before that, and Steve alluded to it, our field hockey team has continued on the tradition of excellence. And when you travel to these venues, which I get the opportunity to do, our student athletes and our parents behave really, really well. And if you did not know this, athletics can bring out the best and worst in people. Some of the worst behavior I, I ever have seen in my, in my life revolves around athletics. And again, the amount of just, for lack of a better term, people who get it from the Gostown High School greater community is exceptional. I don't think it just happens. And I guess I am extremely proud of what we all have been able to create. And I'd go back to that slide about the balance. I get it, New Hampshire's difficult, how we fund education, property taxes. Like most of you, we have direct people, I know my parents, where they live in the state of New Hampshire. They really have trouble paying their taxes, it's not easy. So what becomes of this great endeavor, it's hard to predict. And you'd hear different people saying different things, but I just wanted to share with you. I believe with the money that we're given, that we're doing a very, very, very good job by kids and, and their, their parents. And when I get an opportunity, it happens quite a bit over the last few years, where people might be switching from a private school or people might be debating about Gostown. There has not been a person who I have not walked through the school who says, wow, it's really nice there. And, and so I just wanted to mention that in my last, my minutes way up. It goes back to the contract keys clearly. We just have really good people throughout, teacher, custodians throughout, who just do their best. And, and I get it, it'll be interesting to see what, what our town says via the voting booth. I, I just get it, it's complicated, it's hard. I just wanted people to know from my perspective. And I see it as a dad with two students who are in Gostown High School. It's a great place, it's hard as heck. It's hard to be a student at Gostown High School, I'm glad I did it thirty years ago. It's hard. They are, they are working hard, there's great instruction going on. And that's why we're getting the results collectively that we're getting, so.
Do you have, along the lines of what you're saying now and the need for our contracts to be passed this year, can you speak at all about ways that your staff is saving money for the district and, and different things that they're doing? Like I know there's a lot of mentoring and one person goes to a conference, brings in info. Can you speak to that at all as to, you know, how money is being saved because teachers are doing over and above? Or staff members are doing over and above?
I, I see a lot of people who just are going above and beyond, they're fully present, they're always willing to help, lend a hand. We, and you mentioned mentoring, there's people in the summertime, it's, it's like the place doesn't close, you know. There's people here in the summertime all the time, there's people who are bringing, you know, we hire our six or seven new people this year. There's people who are giving up multiple days to help, to help teachers get prepared before the, before the year starts. And, and again, it might not be any different than other jobs and professions outside of education where people can contribute. I'm just giving you my observation here, that I think people are really, really working hard.
On your cost per pupil, what year are you basing that on? What was, what are the latest statistics on that, twenty thirteen or twenty twelve?
It was November twenty-twelve.
November twenty-twelve, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Go Red Sox, I mean, go, no, Jerry, you're up.
All right.
Anything else for the high school before we ask Mr. Aggett to come up?
We have no staff needs this year. No staff needs.
No new staff needs.
No.
I think we're very pragmatic, realist, and I think it's nothing, it's, yeah, it's, no new staff.
Well, that was the nature of the question that I had, but it might be more for Brian and then it might be globally, a district question. Two-nineteen, I know that's not the primary line, but it's indicating addition of six new paras to cover students from Mountain View. So it looks like the intent is to bring six new paras in. And I, I guess my question is that being the case, are we seeing any adjustment at Mountain View or are those?
We, we are. And also, many of those positions are funded by New Boston. So that we have, you know, as you know, kids moving, matriculating up through the system as they move, so move their paras. You know, one of the, the models that we use to support our special education students are many of them do have the need for paraprofessional support throughout the day. So those positions that we have coming in and Kate, I believe, has a handy little chart that breaks down all of those paras that are funded by Dunbarton, by New Boston, and by Gostown. We have, you'll see in the Mountain View budget, there is a rather significant increase in new paras funded by New Boston, which is a function of the students that they currently have in sixth grade that will be, be moving on to seventh grade next year. So you, you do see those and some of those are offsetting for revenue too.
And they're all IEP driven?
They're all IEP driven. And maybe just to remind the board, when we have students that require a one-on-one or a shared paraprofessional, we have a research-based practice that we use to guide teams through that decision-making. We actually have a, a whole process that teams have to deliberate on. I think it's a six or seven-page document to help make those decisions to justify, so that I can confidently say to the board, we have a standardized process of how those decisions are made in terms of student allocations, because we know there are obviously costs associated with them.
I actually do have another question, I do apologize. But I, I just know I need to get this clear, because it, it will be asked again. I am looking at page two-seventeen right now, total equipment. Current year budget is about eighty-six hundred dollars. The requested is about a hundred and thirty-six. So as you see, it's, it's a significant jump, so I just want to make sure that I've got, do you see what I'm talking about? I'm on page two-one-seven.
Yeah, it actually goes back, if you go all the way back to.
It's an accumulation.
Yeah, it's an accumulation that starts on.
Two-fifteen.
Have you found it yet, do you know where I am?
Yeah, I think it starts with, on page two-oh-seven with the three-thirty-nine lines. So you start there and you go through. And again, these are all of your, these are your, your supply lines. Which, as you look at each of these supply lines increasing, the six-forty-one, which is the books and printed material.
Yeah, and that's what we were talking about, the AP, the AP tax.
Exactly, that's where all of that came from. You will see, for example, if you look at on page two-fourteen, the eleven-hundred, six-forty-three, admin reduction of six hundred. We hadn't been spending all of that line, so we brought it down. So you'll see those adjustments based on actuals throughout. You'll see also on page two-fifteen, all of the smart boards in this budget were cut. There is not one smart board in this budget. As we had talked on the first night when the budget was given to the board, when we look at our, what we would anticipate to be savings for both teacher turnover money and health insurance coming in below the GMR, we would hope to come back to the board and look to possibly fund some of the technology requests that were eliminated from the budget. We have cut smart boards, iPads, replacement computers, monitors. When Mr. Giralliman comes up and speaks to you in a little bit, he's gonna talk about some network components that we felt were mission critical, that have remained in the budget. But by and large, all of the other technology pieces have been eliminated with the anticipation that we will have hopefully funds available through teacher turnover money and health insurance savings. And didn't, we didn't include them in the budget.
Saying, it starts on two-fifteen, the numbers that are gonna get you to that, it starts on two-fifteen seventy-one. And, and you can see, if you, if you look down that middle column, that last year, it was, it was pretty lean.
Very much so.
And so at that first one, music, new equipment, this current budget had nineteen hundred dollars. And the requested's at fifty-four hundred. Under.
I see a CNC router.
Yep. Yep, and then we get into those pieces.
Is that replacement, do we know, or is that a new program or, do you know if that's replacement?
No, the router is new.
Brand new?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, then a big piece of that is the sixty thousand dollars that's here for, in parts, the DVR, the new cameras that, that Brian has spoken to. The piece. The piece that Gary is going to talk about shortly in terms of the backbone of the system. And then, as we continue down, it's that, some of that new, those new pieces that we spoke to, the lighting in the theater. We get into replacement furniture, which is the instrument storage. So there are some real big ticket items that go from pages two fifteen to two seventeen. And many of those lines over the last two years have been completely zeroed out.
And some of those, in some of those, we did debate and deliberate on refrigerator for faculty use for twelve hundred was one that I struggled with, but left in to support the teachers having a new fridge. The one in the teacher's room is old and tired, and as I understand it, inefficient and inconsistent.
And part of that is, it would be a complete fridge, which is what makes it a little more expensive. The freezer sits empty ninety percent of the time, there's never room for everyone's fridge.
But in terms of the lighting in the theater, the instruments, the storage for the instruments, those were all things that we felt were important parts of the integrated arts program and the experience that our kids have here at Gostown High School.
It sounds like those kinds of things are going to support being able to use those things longer and have them not be broken or damaged.
It's also a safety issue, when you have that many kids playing that many instruments, if you don't have a good system for how to store them, they're laying around all over the floor.
It's a mess.
And it is a mess. And the teachers do a good job, having the kids keep it as clean as they can, but when you don't have a system or the infrastructure to manage it, it is problematic. And the instruments are all over the classrooms, they're in the hallway, and this would be something that would be an improvement from a safety perspective, in my mindset.
Does anybody else have any other questions for these nice people? Will you go? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Aggett's presentation, he's going to go through the maintenance lines of all of the schools, highlighting the areas of increase or areas that were cut. And on the first night when we gave out the budget, we did pitch the idea of considering if the board was interested whether we had maintenance items that the board might want to consider as a separate warrant. There are many CIP items that are in this budget, that as we talk about cuts for the last five years, that I think Mr. Aggett's lines probably more than most have been significantly reduced, and we are feeling the effects of the wear and tear on our buildings that we haven't been able to provide the upkeep. So, Jerry?
Good evening, you should all have a copy of this PowerPoint. And what I did was, I tried to concentrate on safety as a paramount piece to this. I also, if we can go to the first slide, what I did was showed in the bottom of each school, you'll see reduction. Those are items that we have taken out of a budget request. I think it's important to see, you'll see what it is and how it reflects on the last slide, particularly the grounds, some of the grounds lines. So, Brian and I sat down quite a few times and went over some of this. It's very lean, and you'll see that. So if we want, let's start with Glen Lake, and you'll see that we discussed this when Leslie was here. You'll see this in all the schools to put in push-button locks. So that's a first addition that you'll see, two thousand dollars. There's also security cameras, and I can maybe let Brian speak to that. It's kind of a global thing, something we're going to do at all the schools. We've lost money just about every year in pavement, you're going to see that in each one of the schools, pavement maintenance. And we did speak about the other night about a grounds plan for Glen Lake.
And that was for slice seating?
Slice seating, aeration, try to make that a more appropriate space for the students to use. You'll see that we did cut out seal coat and pavement, two-way radios. Water and sewer was a reduction.
Based on actuals.
On actuals, and the tree trimming, and you'll see how that works into the last slide. Any questions on Glen Lake? There's not a lot there.
Why did you take up the two-way radios? Because I know those are used for safety purposes a lot.
Right.
Do they have enough that are working?
We cut every radio out of the budget. We feel that at this point, we've been buying radios pretty consistently. They do have a finite amount of time that they last. We would be looking to purchase them if we had one break. We're not discontinuing the use of the two-way radios, but we did not carry them forward. I think the board has seen those lines year after year after year, as has the Budget Committee. So the two-way radios and the graphic calculators were all removed.
And they're in pretty good shape?
For the most part.
I just want to see if there's anything else that's... I did increase the six-eleven lines in all the schools to about fifteen or twenty percent, where we've, each year been, been cut back on those. So you'll see that on all the six-elevens. And I think pretty much everything remains the same. There isn't anything glaringly different from last year's budget.
Can we go on to Bartlett?
Yes.
Hey, before we do, I'm super sorry, just a clarification, because I don't have the answer. We reduced four thirty-one seal coat and pavement markings by fourteen thousand, but we added pavement markings in for two thousand. Are those different pavement markings, or are they just some pavement markings? I just, I'm trying to...
We're at Glen Lake?
Yeah, I apologize, I know you moved on to Bartlett already.
I'm sorry, it probably shouldn't say pavement markings, the seal coating is really what it is.
Okay.
The pavement markings would be the striping and the parking spaces, and of course, the turtles.
Perfect, yeah, I figured that might be what it was, but rather than make it up myself.
And again, the seal coating is something that is important to do for the maintenance of that facility. We do see that as being important, but when we were looking to bring a budget to you, we wanted to focus more on teaching and learning.
If we look at Bartlett, again, not a lot in the way of maintenance requests after sitting down with David. The, there is one thing that keeps coming up, and that is certainly the, I call it the north entrance, is to put a card reader in for staff to be able to come in and out of that space, which they do all the time, and right now, they do use a key. So that's a request that you may have seen last year as well.
Jerry, we also didn't capture on the top of this, we had added DVR and cameras for Bartlett. I had shared with the board that we currently have three working cameras at Bartlett.
Correct.
That are of pretty low quality, and we thought that this was important to look at securing the perimeter and the interior of the building. I'm sorry, that's not on this slide, I didn't catch it until just now, that money is in this budget.
It is in my line, okay.
Yep.
I'm sorry that I don't remember this, but does Bartlett have the locks inside the doors?
Yeah, that's going to be included in the door replacement this year.
Okay.
So that should all be...
So they will have, okay.
When would you expect to have that done, Jerry?
I'm supposed to have a meeting today with the door person, but we had to reschedule. So it'll be, I'm going to guess, Christmas vacation or Christmas break. I need a couple days to get those all installed. Again, pavement markings has been taken out. Patch and seal coat has been taken out. There had been discussion about enlarging the driveway.
That was the big ticket item here. I think the board is well aware that parking and drop-off and pickup at Bartlett is a safety issue. We have a very small area that parents are able to pull into to drop kids off. The staff work really hard to be picking kids up curbside. We have staff outside meeting cars as they pull up. They get kids out of the car, and they get them into the building, they get the car out of there so the next car can come in. What, and this again was part of that Bartlett project, was to increase the size. And where the current sign is, if you think about Bartlett, it would extend that drive all the way down to where that current sign is. And if you drive by and look, the curbing has a notch cut out already when they redid the sidewalks. It was built to anticipate the drive exiting there, that's that forty-two thousand five hundred for that project.
Any questions with regards to Bartlett?
Yeah, as a new equipment.
It could go to a seven thirty-five line. I, you know, I did put it in four thirty-two, because there will be some wiring I'll have to do. But that really, that can be a seven thirty-five or a seven thirty-one line.
That's not two thousand wiring, right? That's like a whole, that's a whole...
No, no, that's, right, that's the whole shebang. It'd be similar to what we have in the theater here, and be able to go up and down.
Go on to Maple?
Okay, Maple. Again, you'll see security cameras.
They're actually, if I can give a clarifier, the security cameras at Maple, we already have the DVR at Maple. That DVR is something I've noticed, we have double counted. We will make an adjustment on page two fifteen at the high school, we have money in for DVR. We had intended for this twenty thousand to include that DVR that would be put here at the high school. She already has a DVR at Maple, she just doesn't have the operational cameras. She has several cameras that are old, and the picture quality is not good. So we would look at this being probably about fourteen or so of that would be cameras. So there's actually a, it should be identified at the high school, we will make that adjustment.
So this will be adjusted?
That'll be adjusted, but that's for new cameras at Maple. The ones we have at Maple, if it's sunny, there's tremendous glare, and you can't, you can't see anything when it's really sunny. They're just, they're old, and they don't work right. You've got the classroom locks here, Jerry?
Classroom locks are in this budget, as well as some money to do repairs to asphalt. And again, keeping in a couple of pairs of exterior doors. We've been trying to replace a few every year, we've done four so far. So that's something we wanted to keep in. I also would like you, again, to just look at what we've reduced or taken out. We took out the bathroom upgrade. In order to get to a respectable level, that's something that we will defer. We looked into it, we've done several of them, and I think it's something that we can move. The classroom sinks and countertops is the exact same project that was done at Bartlett. We replaced these small countertops with appropriate faucets. Carpet installation in the administration, you probably see that every year. Again, that's something we felt we could defer until there is a renovation project and decide at that time whether it's something we want to do.
That carpet is in terrible condition.
It is.
It has stains, fall over it, it's...
Years and years old. And the window replacement, and you'll see tree trimming and brushing, brush cleaning. Again, that'll tie into the very last page of this presentation. Any questions? Any questions on Maple? Mountain View? We made a couple of changes just today. You'll see at Mountain View, the classroom lock replacement. The family and consumer science room countertop replacement. Sand and refinish the hilltop stage. Installing acoustic panels in the hilltop.
Which, if I can speak to that, that actually was an outgrowth of our PBIS leadership team. The board may recall, I think I briefed you, that we added an additions, additional section of lunch this year for Mountain View, which reduced the number of seventh and eighth graders that we had in lunch. That can be a rather loud space, a large concrete room with seventh and eighth graders. We were looking at the acoustical panels to be able to absorb some of the sound and to help bring down the decibel level in the cafeteria.
It's something we would purchase and we would install. We also have, I had a plan in place to replace the rubber stairways throughout the building. What you see here is the stairway that does go up from the main corridor up to the hilltop. So that would be the first rubber stairwell to be replaced. You'll see this reverse auto scrubbing machine, which would allow us not to have to strip floors. As you know, every year, it gets kind of truncated is the amount of time that we have. Since the schools are used all year, it does get harder and harder to get these floors, classrooms, pull the furniture out, put them back in, strip the floors and so on. So if we get that machine, that would save an incredible amount of time, and it would save product that we wouldn't have to purchase. You'll see again in here, tree and brush trimming. I don't know why we have athletic...
It's supposed to be field.
It's probably one athletic file.
It is, it's a file, see, a big file.
It's just ongoing work on the fields at Mountain View. And tree and brush trimming, we actually have done a fair amount of tree and brush trimming at Mountain View this year. That was something that Jerry and his guys have worked, have been working at. When you go up the driveway, one of my biggest complaints was it was getting overgrown, and there were branches sticking out past the guardrails, so they've been cutting those back. In the back of the school, there were trees and shrubs that were growing up next to the building, we took those all out. One thing that we didn't mention at the high school that we'd like to target for tree cutting is out back behind the high school, between the back road that goes around the high school and the student parking lot. The woods are rather thick, we'd like to thin that out so that we can have a better view, an increased visibility of what may be happening up in that parking lot. So that's something that Frank and I have talked a lot about with Jerry as we've walked around the exterior of the school. So that is something that, when we get to the last slide and we talk about some of the hopes, that would be something we'd like to focus more on. that would be something we'd like to focus more on.
And I guess I'm noticing that on the other schools, they all ask for tree and brush trimming and that was cut. Is, is the, the feeling that it is just more dire need at Mountain View than at the other schools or is it more prolific?
Certainly Mountain View would require the, the most amount of work, there's no question. But you'll see as we get to, I'd like to maybe get, well, once we get to the, the last slide, you'll have an idea of why this is called the way it is, I hope.
Jerry, the, the rubber stairway was a safety issue, wasn't it?
It is, it's, it's starting to wear. It has a textured finish and you'll see that it's beginning, there really isn't much of a texture left. So I'm concerned, especially wet weather, that that could be an issue.
And just regarding the family computer, uh, can you, family and consumer science?
Yes.
Counter top, what's the story with that? Is it, is it super old? Is it original countertop?
It is, and we've had issues for a long time trying to re-glue down some of that formica.
It's laminated, it's lifted up.
And it's to the point where I can't, it's very hard to glue, glue to glue, it just doesn't work.
Right.
We've done the best we can, I, I, you know, we've had to actually tape some of it. And, and the cabinets as well are starting to warp it. It is time to, to kind of give that a facelift.
The stoves as well, I think there are, I think four or five stoves in that room and I think we've replaced two of them. I think three of them are still the original electric stove from twenty, twenty years ago. So all of that equipment is, has really run its lifetime of middle school kids treating it as middle school kids do.
Is this different from the life, life school lab?
Yes.
This is the other component of it, not the life school lab?
Correct. We did cut the fascia boards, you want to speak to that?
Well, we cut, we cut an extensive amount, leaving some money to take care of the very worst areas.
Maybe just start, Jerry, explaining what that is.
A fascia board is, now that we've done the roof, I think it's more than glaring. It's the boards that are, surround the roof that you'll see as you come in. There's certain areas that are starting to get dry rot and you'll see that. We've attempted to scrape and clean and paint some of it that we can get to. Some of it we will need to have a, some, some kind of a lift to get to, especially across from the baseball field. That's a tough area to get up to.
What we'd really like to do is to replace, right now it's pine, it's painted pine. We'd like to replace it with either.
A solid.
Wrapped aluminum or better still, the composite plastic boards that really lasts forever. I mean, they're a little more expensive to install, but that really would be the products I think that you'd be looking at, Jerry?
Yeah, like a Trex.
Like a composite material.
Right, exactly. We've done that with the portable classrooms, the ramps, replaced all those with Trex.
The locker painting you have seen before, that involved stripping them and having them electrostatically painted. The lockers are in kind of tough shape at Mountain View. But we did, we did remove that. As we did the genie lift, we do have one, this is a scissor lift. We have one at the high school. It is heavy and cumbersome to move, but we felt that it would be something that we would continue to do as opposed to asking for a second one.
Any questions on Mountain View? All right, we'll go to the high school and you'll see, there's an awful lot of reduction. So some of the, some of the issues that we have put forward is, of course, the new classroom door locks. I'd like to have two dehumidifiers, industrial type. I think it's something we can use, not just when we have a catastrophic issue, but it is something we should have on hand, we should have them in the district. So I did put them in here and I also put in a, the same machine that we saw at Mountain View, to be able to strip floors without using chemicals. And then, maybe I should just go through, just so you have an idea of what, what it is we're deferring. I think it's important to note that. The first item is the new gym steel doors, that is a CIP. It's been in there for a few years. It is something that we'll keep in CIP and we will just very carefully move it to the right for, for another year. The other thing is the improved rear parking area. And I, I could have Frank easily speak to that, but the idea here is, if you've ever been here when school is dismissed, we have two hundred, three hundred kids trying to exit from the middle area, which is the tech area, let's say, and it is an absolute nightmare. The idea is to make a road that goes up and make a two-way in the back where the service road is now and have kids being able to come up. And there'll be another road cut in down near the theater area and we'll be able to exit, bypassing that middle section. Does this make sense?
So that when kids are walking up to the parking lot. And, and I'm sorry, we could have had photos for you, but I mean, this was something that we did cut.
And Jerry, the, the short version is that, that notion again, when kids leave, right now, the drive is also the walkway and then plus, it's just a mess and there's a couple hundred teenage kids, which I guess I didn't truly appreciate it until my daughter turned sixteen, is that, it's a bad, it's not a great situation. And so the idea would be.
It don't get better.
Yeah. The idea would be, so like, let's say even if you, different versions of how to do this, but let's say if you didn't even, if, when you turn the corner by the softball field, if you just went straight and you cut a road in, right there, into the back lot. And then currently where the road is to the back parking lot now would become some type of nice, maybe water would absorb too, so that the rain wouldn't flow down and flood the building. But that, that area could become a nice walkway of some sort and then ideally have a road way down at the far end of the parking lot closer to Wallace Road. So it'd be nice and safe, easier to get in and out of. And, and we think it would make a lot of sense and it clearly would be a lot safer. In, in many ways, the parking lot works, it had a lot of different times, but for that ten minutes, when school gets out, it's not a good situation. And I would say bare minimum, if we don't get that bigger version, which I maybe confuse you more, somehow, some way to get one additional road that would be down closer to Wallace. So if nothing else, we could just block off the current road at two forty one. So no cars would come up, down that way, they would come down farther towards Wallace and that would just be a safer walkway for kids to walk to their cars instead of having kids come down. And I'll just throw this out and I'm really leaving now, is picture on Wednesday and Thursday of this week, we have a home playoff game at three. Bad situation, you know? We'll do our best to make it safe, but home playoff game at three, so people entering, kids exiting, kids walking across, it just, it does not work well. That's an anomaly, it doesn't happen often. But again, it, it just so happens, we have two good soccer teams, boys and girls, both will play off games. It's three o'clock starts instead of four because of the lighting, it can go into overtime and school ends at two forty one. It just does not work well at all. We'll do our best to, to put it in the past, but this would be, this would be one.
I'll be working traffic control. Thank you, thank you Frank.
I wish I could explain that a little bit better, but.
Jerry, can I, can I ask you a question that goes far beyond my expertise?
Yeah.
Is, is there, is, is the floor scrub you're talking about purchasing, sort of high-end, as good as it gets, durable machine that ought to last a few years?
Yes, yeah, certainly, it should.
Cause, cause here's my question, I mean, we're thinking about the amount of floor space. If you're just talking about classrooms, at least during the year, as opposed to doing all the hallways as well. Is, is there an even better machine that you could get to use for both schools? That would be more durable, would last for longer and would meet your personnel and capacity needs?
This is pretty high-end, I priced them. It is a machine that we currently do not use, it's kind of new. And what got us excited to look at was the fact that it didn't require chemicals and it could literally strip a floor and allow you to recote. I, I had one demonstration and I'm still looking into getting some more, there's different manufacturers. This is kind of a composite number, but it is something I think with what we, you know, it is tougher and tougher every year to try to get everything done. Usually we make it at, you know, very last minute, but it would be a tremendous tool.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, when, when I'm thinking about the, the amount of floor space, the number of people you have who can do the job, if, if you need a machine, do you need a machine for each building?
Well, I don't know about, the ones I run into that are the toughest is certainly Mountain View and high school. So at this point, I, I don't see it as a necessity for Maple, Bartlett. I think we're okay. But those are the two schools that, you know, we're biting on nails at the very end, hoping that we get it all done, so.
Well, and Jerry also, Mountain View in particular, the board will recall, there were large sections of that school that were carpeted. And we removed all the carpet from the hallways, we replaced it with tile. We removed all the carpet from the administrative offices, we replaced it with tile. So we, we've increased the square footage of non-carpet surface considerably, which is much better, cleaner, brighter, more sanitary. It's, it's a much better situation, but obviously the need to clean it remains.
So, so I'll, I'll take that to be a yes, we need a machine in both buildings, thanks.
I have to say, I do, I like the idea of having something that allows you to strip the floors without using chemicals, just from an environmental safety standpoint and, and health standpoint, I, I think that's a great direction going.
That's, it's a lot quicker this machine than the way you're currently stripping.
I would, I would think, yes, yeah.
Jenny, did I say that?
Yes, I'm wondering if, because listening to the rear parking area, it sounds like a pretty important thing and we're cutting it. Is that going to be a CIP item or?
Well, and again, that I think is a discussion for, for the board to consider. When, when Ray and I were looking at the overall cost impact, and I mean, if you add up all of what we cut, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of maintenance projects that have been in CIP or delayed over the last several years. I agree with Frank, I've been in the back of the school. It, it is not the best way to do it. He's right about the drainage. When we talk about the drainage project that we also cut out of here, it's significant, the back of the school needs a lot of work. The way that it was designed, it doesn't work, as evidenced by, we have, now had two floods. We'll have a third, we'll have a fourth, we'll have a fifth. It's unfortunate, but the way that that water flows on the paved surfaces is not going to get any better.
I'm sorry, where are we with that grant application?
We have not, we have not heard anything yet. Chief Sullivan did submit all of his paperwork, it's only available through the police department. We did have, it's important to remember that Chief Sullivan shared that it is a matching grant. It is not a, we apply for it and we get money and don't have to contribute. So we have a fifty percent matching amount. Carl and Megan from the town worked with Jerry and his folks.
Big thank you to them for going through that.
They were exceptionally helpful for us to pull together some, some drainage project considerations and to cost them out. It's a pretty significant amount of money. And so to, to really tackle that would be a pretty significant capital project.
So we're looking at this fifty thousand here for this ground drainage. Is that, was that assuming we would get the grant?
Yes.
Is that the matching, so the estimate then is a hundred thousand to handle this?
But I think what we could do is, the sense that I get from Carl and from Megan, anything we would do, we, we could put twenty thousand towards it and we could make improvements. To really do what they would consider to be a complete remediation would be about a hundred thousand dollar project. But there are things that Jerry and I have talked about that we could do now that would make it better. When Frank talks about the connector between the back parking lot and the road going around the school, it's a paved slope that goes directly towards the school. So all the water on the upper pavement flows right down that road, straight towards the high school. And it culminates in this low area where there's a catch basin that has an exit pipe that's only two inches. So the water fills up, the drain coming off the roof is a two-inch pipe. That catch basin feeds into it and you've got that volume of water trying to get out through a two-inch pipe. It's never going to work. So there are things that we could do now that, that we've talked about. There's a, there's a green section out back behind the school that we could have an excavator come in and clean it out and dig it out and make kind of a, a catch basin, almost like a rain area, collection area, line it with riprap. And there are pipes that go all the way out to the softball fields that the town would come and ream clean and we could do some work that we think would help, probably wouldn't take care of it. So the fifty thousand would be what, what the town is recommending is the right way to fix it. If we can't fund fifty thousand, we can do some things that will make some of it better now.
But you took it out of the budget, so if we get the grant, where does the matching funds come from?
We, we took it out of the budget with the idea that the board might want to consider putting it in as a separate warrant article. And, and I guess I'd say, anything that we took out of the budget, we're, we're open to you putting in or asking us if we were to put this in, what would you consider removing or changing if you wanted the bottom line to stay the same?
When is the grant set to be granted?
The way that.
Current fiscal year or the next fiscal year?
I'm not entirely sure. What Chief Sullivan, and I'm not familiar with police grants or FEMA grants, so this is, is not an area that I've ever experienced before. What Chief Sullivan described was you had to do what I would call a preliminary application. So you have to put in that you have an interest in a water project, drainage project. And you send it to FEMA and then they evaluate what they have for grants and then recommend you to apply for a grant. So this first round was almost like an eligibility application, is I think how the chief has described it. I, I, I don't know, I don't know if they have one grant, if they have ten grants. I don't know if it's this year or it's next year. And that's, I, I did try to get him to come to a school board meeting, but they had a town, had a selectmen meeting the night that we tried to get him. I can see if I can get more information.
If it would help us make an informed decision, because certainly if we do, if we are fortunate enough to get the grant and yet we have no appropriation for the match, it, it seems like an exercise in futility.
Right. And what it is, is that if people want to see it, I mean, we, we can't have, it's actually for music.
So you want the flood?
Well, you'll see the water.
Seriously?
Yeah.
You did it to music?
Well, this is like the whole thing, like.
Do I have to watch that?
Yes.
You have to dance it, never mind, yeah. It makes me cry.
I know.
You'll see how fast.
When, when it happened, Ray and I watched, watched the flood come in on the cameras. It was. It goes into the roof drain. Just out at the front of the building, on the crib, in that kind of wetlands area beyond the parking lot.
Two inch, yes.
Yeah, that's the problem.
It was a gorgeous, gorgeous, beautiful sunny day and there was the, the rainstorm.
Entertainer.
Oh.
Is it really twenty minutes? No. That's real time, yes. So, this is the real one, you don't want the real one. Yeah. Can you just put it on fast forward?
Oh, I'm banking on the music, that's.
All right, you guys.
All right. Sounds good. Okay. So, um, where were you there, Jerry? We were still talking about the rear parking, um, maybe locker painting? Is that where you've gotten to?
Uh, we do have, we do have, uh, electrostatically painting the one hundred wing lockers. Uh, that's been something we've had in the budget for a couple of years. Uh, and then there is in CIP, the replacement of the three hundred wing, which would be the final, uh, if I'm, if I'm right, it's the final replacement for lockers. We cut back some of the replacement repairs to the bleachers seating. And I don't want to give you the wrong impression. The manufacturer's come in, has come out with a solid, uh, piece to replace, uh, some of the, the original seating that we've experienced some cracking. Um, I don't think there's any, right now, any issues, but we're trying to do a section at a time. We've already done a couple. Um, so, we, we did take that out. We had, uh, something in there to integrate with our paging system, which would allow, uh, weather and FM broadcast throughout the building. There's some small electrical upgrades, uh, in the theater. Don't ask me right now what they are. I, I've got it somewhere in here, but, um, it was small. It wasn't, uh, anything huge. Um, I took out re-tiling. We did, uh, four or five this last summer. It is something, uh, we took the worst rooms. These are, uh, every three years, we do an, uh, asbestos, uh, inspection. And they identify classrooms that they would like improvements in. So, we've been fortunate that here in the high school, the, the rooms that do remain with nine by nine tile are in relatively good shape. But the idea is to consistently re-tile over these until, before they become an issue. Once they start cracking, then we, we have to look into abatement. So, um, I, I, I was comfortable enough to say we could defer for one more year. Why did I go over this? Oh, a set of exterior doors. This is something, um, that I, I really didn't want to cut, but we're, we're trying to make this as level as we could. The radios are out. There's a grounds reduction of, of fifteen thousand. Of course, the drainage pro- project.
What does that ground reduction mean? What are you cutting?
It's, it's just a, um, you have the.
Is it just unspent money or is it, you know, cutting back on a, on a service?
No, no service. It is. It's a two, six, three, zero. This was, there was pavement repairs and a shed for the tractor. That, that's what that line is.
Yeah, the track, the tractor shed, we thought was something that was worth doing. The tractor right now sits in the maintenance area where all the drainage happens. That's where the tractor sits inside. It would be nice to get that tractor out of that space and into a separate space. But it, we thought it was a lot of money and money that would be better spent on teaching and learning.
Good call. I remember a couple of years ago when we bought the tractor. There was a shed we, we put it, and there was an old shed there that was falling down.
It's still there.
It is still there.
Or there's an, there's another one that's fallen down. We're looking to take that out too.
And they said it was going to be blocked on the inside.
Yeah.
Uh, then we, we took out the abatement because we, uh, we're not going to do any of the floors. So, um, and again, as I explained before, this is an unknown. You just don't know. So, if you run into a problem, you, you may have to do some abatement. And the bathroom petition, we were doing, uh, one bathroom a year and we pulled, pulled that out.
How many bathrooms do you have left to do right now?
We have one, two, three. Three and the, we did a blow dryer. Four, I think, that are left.
Out of how many bathrooms do we have in the building?
I'm not sure. A lot.
Kim's counting for us right now.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, we've been doing, uh, we've been doing a bathroom per year.
Okay, thank you. The signage, Jerry, is something that.
It was something for the inside of the building to, as visitors would come in, um, would be a clear indication. Once they come through those doors, theater, uh, gymnasium, uh, media center, um, could point to the sciences. Um, we don't really have a directory.
I think that also included some exterior signage.
Yeah.
And some exterior signage.
I remember talking about that last year.
Yep, yeah.
I mean, really, we've talked about most of these things for multiple years, except for the drainage. That's, that's really the only thing that's new here. You have seen every one of these things before.
That's kind of it for the, the big stuff here at the high school. Who, you want to head already? Okay, um. No, any questions about the high school? Um, and then new to the, to our request is the addition of a part-time grounds person. That would be assigned throughout the district. This would be a three point seven hours a day.
Seven five.
That's what I meant. Three point five hours a day year round. Uh, does not impact the benefit line. I did put in here some of the tasks I would see happening primarily. This would cover anything that we currently don't have an agreement with, uh, Parks and Rec. The school district doesn't own a mower. It is something we make, we may want to consider. There are a lot of areas that Parks and Rec couldn't possibly maintain. Um, one of the things we're finding is we have a tremendous overgrowth, particularly at Mountain View and certainly here at the high school. Uh, this position would, uh, to, take care of weeding, raking, watering the grounds, cutting back shrubs, tr- trees. Uh, in the winter, help with snow removal. I have exterior lighting, assist with some, uh, game field work that's happened in the past, uh, where the athletic director has had to go out and line a field. You know, so this position would be, um, an amazing addition to what we already have. And we're trying to do some of this with existing tasks and, uh, existing, um.
Staff.
Staff, but it's been difficult. And we're really kind of pushing them to try to do that. I did speak to the, like, potential savings that came up in the last meeting. Last year, we spent, it's not a phenomenal amount of money, but we spent three thousand dollars in hiring somebody to remove trees. We also cut four thousand out of this requested, uh, package budget. I think this position, I, uh, it's, um. I don't have the, the actual number, but I think it was around eight thousand is what this position would impact the budget at.
I think it was fourteen.
Was it?
Okay.
So, I was a little bit off. I think it's a necessary position. I think we've come to that point where we need to really look at, you know, weed whacking and, uh, maintaining these grounds.
I, I, I would just add that I completely agree. It's, it's sometimes painful for me when you go up to a school and you know the quality of the educational services being provided on the inside. And on the outside, you see weeds growing everywhere. You see, um, areas that have washed out and rocks are all over walkways. To have someone to be able to go out and clean and maintain the exterior of our building to a more professional level, I think would be critically important for maintaining our building. The pride of our schools, the appearance of our schools, the parents, for, um, other folks when they come up to our schools. It's just, you, you wouldn't know that we have, um, outstanding services for kids when you walk up and you see, um, in the middle of a cul-de-sac at Mountain View. And it looks better than it's looked in years around that flagpole, but bushes overgrown, weeds growing everywhere, mulch that hasn't been replaced. Bushes grown up up against the sides of the building. It's just, there's, it's really neglected. And unfortunately, um, we don't have the custodial staff to be able to do it with our current fleet hence the, hence the request. You found it? One movie, okay. It's only a minute.
Thanks, Jay.
He's got a title?
Yes.
Eddie Rabbit. There were other camera angles that you could look up towards the student parking lot and you could see waves. The water was flowing so fast that there were waves coming down that slope.
All right.
Any other questions for Mr. Aggett?
Thanks, Jay.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you. The last piece for tech this evening, there are software lines in all of the schools and in the district lines. There are some replacement computer parts in all the lines throughout the schools. As I said earlier, all the smart boards, the iPads, um, those pieces have all been cut. But Jer, Gary has a very specific, uh, project that he's focusing on here at the high school and at Mountain View to support the backbone infrastructure of our network. And until he explained it very simply to me, probably three or four times, I, I didn't really follow the complexity of it. So, he's going to present that, um, to the board this evening. It is a costly project, uh, over fifty thousand dollars for both schools. But, um, I think as you'll see in Gary's presentation, it is one that is overdue.
Thank you, Brian. I just wanted to start with a, um, quick, um, overview of, um, the equipment that is on our network. We've got over a thousand devices at, um, the high school and the middle school combined. Uh, over a thousand devices here and about seven hundred at, at the middle school. Um, they include our wireless laptops, um, and access points that connect them to the network. Uh, desktop computers, iPads, which are also wireless, printers, IP phones, DVRs, et cetera. We have over seventy network switches combined between the two buildings. Over forty here and, and the remainder at, at Mountain View. And this is the part that we're talking about upgrading. Our fiber backbones are, in both buildings are running at, uh, one gigabit per second. And all of our network switches going into that fiber backbone, in fact, all of the, uh, network connections are also gigabit. These fiber backbones that we have in both of these buildings, the, the equipment and the fiber was installed, um, about ten years ago. So, here's kind of a visual representation of the, um, the whole thing. You see our desktop computers, our wireless, um, system, our, that supports, um, both the, um, the laptops, all the laptops and, and our iPads as well. We've got printers and we've got our phone system on as well. And they're all connected up into, you know, multiple switches. In this building, there are five, um, remote network switch locations that, um, that, um, we have that are, that are connected up with, uh, this fiber backbone. And the fiber backbone is where we access all of our local and district servers, uh, Power School, Moodle, uh, web, email, library system. And it also connects people out to the, um, the internet and the wide area network between all, all of our buildings. To kind of visualize, I think, what the issue is, if you think of these connections, these one thousand here and over seven hundred at the middle school as, um, roadways. And think about what happens when you have multiple two-lane roadways heading into a two, two-lane backbone. What you end up getting is gridlock. So, basically, what we're proposing to do is to increase the size of the, the backbone, um, by a factor of ten, which will speed things up again and actually allow communication. We are, um, suffering ill effects of, um, this congestion now. Um, and it's, and it's affecting, you know, what students can do on the laptops and in the classrooms and we're getting multiple complaints now. Back when we put this in, it was great. Of course, all the network connections to this backbone were ten one hundred at the time. And now, all the computers that you buy have, you know, um, gigabit connections to the network. And so, our backbone is no longer adequate. And, uh, here, here's a visual of actually one of the pieces of equipment that, uh, we would replace. This is our main MDF unit, um, main distribution, um, um, center. That's actually right here at, um, at the high school and it connects to five closets. And the five closets are, are connected with those orange fiber cables you see right there. So, that's basically what the, um, proposal is. And, um, and it would involve upgrading or actually replacing this piece of equipment and a corresponding piece of equipment in each of the five closets. So that the speed was ten gig across the backbone. Now, the equipment that we would take out of here wouldn't just be, um, wasted. We'd actually move it over to our elementary schools and it would be actually a very good upgrade for them, uh, because they don't even have a backbone over there. They have just inter, interconnected switches. And, um, if you happen to be on a switch that's, um, multiple daisy chains away from the servers or the internet connection, you've got really bad. you've got really bad performance over there. So this would be actually a, a great upgrade for Maple and, and for Bartlett by taking the gigabit equipment that's here now and moving it to those locations.
Fifty thousand includes doing that?
We would actually do the work.
Yeah, but I'm thinking can it all be done for fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, I mean, our staff would move the equipment and stuff.
And you'd repurpose the existing backbones at the elementary schools?
Right.
You don't have fiber at the, uh, elementary?
Well, we actually do at Maple.
You do?
Yeah, we would have to, we would have to, um, we'd have to pull a fiber strand or, or multiple strands at Bartlett to, um, utilize some of the equipment. But, um, we actually have the fiber in-house. We've got leftover fiber from the Comcast project and...
Next question, because we did that two summers ago?
Which was that?
To pull, you rewired the whole thing?
Mountain View, right?
Um, the fiber at Mountain View's been in since about the two thousand four, two thousand five. Oh, are you, are you talking about the Fairpoint project?
Yeah.
The Fair, yeah, Fairpoint project, that's, that's not related to, that's not related to this. Um, the Fairpoint is the wide area nec- uh, network connections. This is, we're talking about, um, inside the buildings, both here and Mountain View.
You know, there was a project you were doing.
Phones in, you pulled more wires.
Oh, we've, we've, uh, as, yeah, we've, we're always pulling wires. Yeah, and we may not be done, done pulling cables either, but, uh, and we do that with our own staff.
Yes.
As I was learning about this, because this was all pretty foreign to me, I had asked Gary, if you go back to the, the visual of the roads going up, the way that he explained it to me, is each one of the vertical roads is the same size as the big highway. And that's, that's the area of congestion. When he talks about, if you go to the next slide, expanding the highway, I had asked him, alright, so in two thousand and four, you thought the one gigabyte was as big as you'd ever need. We can't possibly foresee what our technology use will be in the next eight years. Instead of a ten, do they make a twenty? Could you get one that would allow for the expandability and, um...
We, we asked the question, the next step is forty and it's, it's really nothing that's, that's made for our environment. It would be, um, it'd probably cost us a fortune and, and it's just not made for, for the application that, that we need right now.
I was just curious if ten's good.
Ten, ten years from now, we may be coming back and saying we need a hundred gig.
Right.
You know, but that's, and that's technology and it's life means...
You'll find both of these projects on page, the first is, the high school is on page two fifteen. It's down at the bottom. He calls it Pro-Curve MDF and IDF upgrades for thirty-two thousand, forty-two dollars. And the, the network project at Mountain View is on page one sixty-four, which he called Upgrade Network Backbone, which is a project for twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars.
And the difference in price between the two is the number of remote closets that we're gonna be connecting to.
If there are any questions, I'd be happy to not answer them on this. This is, uh, a little outside of...
Gary, I know you had spoken, I think it was at our CNE meeting last year, about how your staff was really low and you were having, um, difficulty for getting, getting things repaired and getting things, um, done. Have, is that problem been, um...
Um, we're, we're still down a staff person, um, compared to where we were back in two thousand four. We had, we had an extra, um, person that was doing a lot of the AV type, type things. A person that we brought back on, or we, we brought an integrator back on doing that was, um, we're very grateful for that.
But in terms of maintaining the overall network, you have less staff to maintain a network that's bigger than it was in two thousand and four?
Not just the network, I mean, all, all of the devices that we have, I mean, it's grown incredibly over the past eight, nine years.
I would say it's more complicated to keep the network, not the network, but the devices than the network. The network is, as, as the network has grown, it's made...
I know I've said this before and I, and I'll say it again, we've, the staff here is great. People like the network in my department, Jeff, Steve, um, Jelaine over at the, uh, middle school. New guy, Danis, you know, coming along, so on. And I salute, I salute them, I tell you, every day.
And they're very calm.
So I just wanna be clear that you're still down one person?
Yeah, we are down a person compared to where we were.
Okay.
It'd be terrific to, to be able, you know, bring somebody else on board. And I would see, if we did have this, somebody else, I would see it almost more of a, uh, another inter- integration person that would, um, help with the actual, you know,
Are you asking for...
You know, use of technology in the classroom.
Are you asking for anything else besides this? Is there anything coupled around that we should know about?
As, as Brian mentioned earlier, you know, there, there were several budget requests, or, you know, things that we really, you know, need to do in certain locations. And, um, it's gonna be deferred until the spring to see what, what funds we have left for. I mean, you know, some of the things are, um, the computers in our, our, um, CAD classroom in, in this building are, are pretty old and, um, probably should be upgraded. There were requests, um, in various locations for additional smart boards. There's inequity right now, you know, some classrooms have them and some don't and, uh, teachers are all clamoring for that, but...
Doctor, what, um, do you have a good idea what backlog you're experiencing being down that one person? You have all these devices, you're down one person. Are you experiencing a backlog? Are you not? What's your status?
It, it's always like a juggling act and, um, sometimes we don't get to things as quickly as we'd like to. But, um, and I think I've sh- shown the slide before where we, you know, kind of compare, um, the recommended staffing levels to like where we are.
I've seen it.
But, um, uh, I, I would say that, you know, nobody would, you know, say that we are, um, you know, insufficient in our, um, you know, assistance and support. So we're, I, I think, you know, ob- obviously, we'd like to be better, we'd like to be stronger, we'd like to have an additional staff person. But I think that the folks that are, are working in this department right now are, are great. And, um, I mean, to even achieve the laptop rollout that we just did, um, and we're still in the middle of. But this building's just about done at this point and we've, you know, migrated the data from, um, all of the old laptops to the new ones. We're still working on, uh, Mountain View. Mountain View's about halfway there. And, um, and this is doing this at the same time, we're also, um, fulfilling, um, tech work requests, you know, printers that aren't working and that type of thing. So it's like a mad scramble, but...
Okay.
I, I think that, uh, I really salute the, the tech staff that we've got.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Gary.
The last piece that we have for the board this evening, this is the first look at revenue projections. And, uh, I will defer questions on this to Mr. Labor on Wednesday evening. But if the board wanted to take a preliminary look at this, you will see what we're expecting for adequacy. School building aid, you will see on the second line that there is a reduction that the board is aware. When Dunbarton leaves us, we will go from a forty percent building project reimbursement rate from the state down to a thirty-five percent. As an area school, we drop down. If we were to drop to a single school district, we would drop down further still. Catastrophic aid projections, I think the board is aware catastrophic aid is special education money that we receive for students whose costs exceed, um, certain percentages. It's three and a half times the state tuition average. You start to get a reimbursement once you get over that threshold. And then when you get up to ten times the state tuition average, we get a, a, a larger reimbursement. That program has been inconsistently funded throughout the years and has had cuts to it. Uh, child nutrition, we're expecting to remain about the same. Uh, federal grant programs, this would include not only our IDEA grant, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. That's the special ed grant that includes, uh, Title IIA, which is our professional development money, Title III, which is BSOL. This is a pretty low projection. Ray and I did talk about this. We do get more than that, um, in federal grants. That's something that Mr. Labor could speak to when he's here. Uh, child nutrition programs. And then if you take a look at the regular ed tuition, Ray has a note here on the right-hand side. He's got eight hundred and three, um, thousand net tuition impact due to Dunbarton's departure. He assumed fifty percent of current GHS enrollment. So that number would be something we could adjust. I think at this point seventy-five percent of the ninety-seven, so to speak, would probably be a fair number. But if you take out the senior class, that does drop it back down, so we're only looking at three grade levels. But that would be something that we could, we could explore a little further.
I was under the assumption we're talking the current nine, ten, eleven minus four.
The current nine, ten, and eleven, but we take out, right, nine, ten, and eleven, current nine, ten, and eleven, yes.
So make sure this is...
And minus the entire senior class.
Oh, no, that's twelve.
Right.
So we don't, if I just took the current nine, ten, and eleven, takes four out of that, because ninety-seven minus four, I thought, I didn't know that a ninety-seven is all. I would, I've suspected the ninety-seven that we sent out were the nine, tenth, and eleventh grades.
Correct.
So if we had ninety-three, ninety-three is what percentage of the total Dunbarton enrollment are, uh, Dunbarton?
It's very, very high minus the twelfth grade.
Yeah.
It's, it's almost all of them. He assumed a more conservative...
So we, if we add in twenty more kids, so to speak, or something?
It would adjust the revenues up.
Another couple of thousand.
Yeah, which is, again, I, I raise it because I think it's significant. Uh, food service and our Medicaid reimbursement program, which is the Medicaid to Schools program, which is reimbursement for special education as well. So the total overall, overall revenues that he's projecting for FY fifteen is fourteen million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand and twelve dollars. He assumed a hundred thousand on reserve fund balance in this calculation. So if you add up the district revenues, the assessment and the state assessment, the overall appropriation comes in at thirty-eight million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fourteen. I think as we adjust the operating budget, you'll see changes there. And certainly the grant program and the revenues would be the two pieces that I think we should have further discussions about. But I, I would be most comf- thank you, guys.
Can I guys?
I would be most comfortable doing that with Mr. Labor.
Okay.
Correct.
What happens to that three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars? Is it a windfall to the state? Is it a, is it a windfall to somebody who, to, to be receiving, receiving SAU who built a building without any anticipation of state aid support from having an additional district?
I would imagine it would just be money that the state doesn't expend that they're planning on expending. There have been several bills, um, over the past couple of years to reinstate building aid. The board will remember, right now there is no building aid. They've talked about targeted building aid for the most significant projects, um...
Well, this is, this is, okay, just so we understand...
It would be money that the state would keep, I would imagine. I might defer to Mr. Cloutier on that.
I don't know the answer, but I can tell you it's disturbing to know that we had an agreement with the state for them to reimburse when the project was anticipated.
Because this is not a mor- this isn't part of a moratorium or building aid.
No, this is...
This is, this is from an existing pot that has been...
This is from the high school.
Right. So, so this isn't something that's going away but for the fact that we've been reduced by a district. The building's still here, the renovations are still here, the students aren't. And so, so I guess one of the things that I, I, I at least would like our public to know the answer to is if this money disappears, which it certainly looks like it will, um, where's it going?
Probably back into the general fund.
Because if the answer to the question is, is that, is that there's a building in another district that was subject to, um, state aid, state building aid, who, and the owners of that building will now benefit because they have an additional community in the district?
No, I don't think so.
I, no, I don't either, but I don't, to be brutally honest, I've never had to ask the question before. Anybody here?
Well, I don't think many people have had to ask this question.
If Bo had something, if we, if Bo, if Bo is having something and now they're gonna have Dunbarton, why wouldn't theirs go up five percent?
Very, well, that, that's my question. And, and here's, here's the thing, we anticipated, they didn't. And so I just, I, for our voters, for the benefit of our public, I think that's an important question to ask and to have answered.
I'll see if, uh, Mr. Labor can do a little more homework and, and maybe try to get an answer for you on that, Phillip.
Maybe Senator DeLisandro.
Well, maybe the good senator. Um, what's interesting is this reduction is for the remaining duration of the bond. So it's not a one-year loss.
That's the entire, no?
It's, it's, no, that's just one year. Every year, it's...
A year.
It's less than...
Every year.
That's, okay, yeah, it's another quarter of a million dollars over the life.
Roughly, yeah. So, a- again, part of the, the fear around our status is losing Dunbarton costs you five percent.
And what we can mention is if we did, if we do not, we have a special school meeting come once a night, seven o'clock. If they do not, we need to get permission to the area so that we don't do another twenty-five every year. So I think that's why we have a special school.
So that is important for that information to get out, for people to know that if they don't vote for that, it's gonna cost them money.
Phillip, do you have any other questions on that? Are we good?
Maybe.
Alright.
I guess it'll depend on the answer to the first one.
I'll have Mr. Labor get in touch with you.
Thanks, that, that's true.
See if we can get an answer for that.
Alright, guys, so it's ten past nine. We've wrapped up our presentations, so we do have a choice. We can dive back into the budget and start deliberating and talking about what we've heard and what we think. Um, or we can choose to stop here and come back Wednesday.
I, I do have a, I have a question that I, I kinda need to have. Before I can really deliberate seriously on the budget, can we have somewhat of an update on the negotiations as to roughly what we think some of the costs may be, end up being? Cause that's gonna affect whether I'll put something back in this budget or not, really. I don't know if an update is, if you think an update is available, I don't know. Like a rough idea of what it's gonna cost.
I mean, it's always helpful to try to make an educated decision. Um, we do...
We have to go into non-public, perhaps on Wednesday, we start coming in at six, if we're still coming at six.
We come at six, yeah.
And we can see if those numbers are available. I got some floating in my brain.
Those, those numbers could be available in non-public.
I'm just thinking, I think, you know...
Right, but they aren't like at this particular... Right, but they aren't like at this particular moment in time, like if we went right now.
But, you know, those numbers are fairly high, that's gonna be a real deterrent for me to wanna add something back into the budget, because I like to get a budget passed and get the contracts passed, so.
If, if it's the board's pleasure, we'd be happy to bring some.
Guessimates, what are what it's gonna be?
Updates.
Updates are helpful.
For non-public.
It is, 'cause you wanna make sure that we're making an informed decision.
And if we need to go to non-public, it might be one of the first things we do rather than the last thing.
Right, well, yeah, we have to do it before we deliberate, 'cause.
Yeah, that's what I'm leaning towards right now, if we have that, to just start off with a non-public.
I think that makes sense.
At six o'clock on Wednesday.
And we're forward, yes.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I for one wouldn't mind, I mean, I've been doing a little bit, I've re- I've been seeing, I can sort of show you the numbers and, and going through and looking at, at the, quickly at the individual buildings and if there are opportunities to do anything there. Was there, I looked through my materials and I couldn't find, and I'm sure there was one, anything on the district changes overview, the district lines.
Yeah, that was the other PowerPoint that Ray had given on the first, last Wednesday.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I remember seeing it, but I can't find a print.
He should have the print, it's the zero, 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 if you look at the logo.
Yeah, no, I, I have, I have that.
You mean, you mean the slide handle?
Put the slide in, yeah.
Like the PowerPoint, a printed version of the PowerPoint?
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Or was it?
We could probably copy one, this is more, and I was always three steps ahead of us.
Look at that.
Great, I'm good, thank you.
All right.
As I have the rest.
I, I might also ask if it's the board's pleasure to have administration here for your next meeting.
Um.
The principals have been asking if they are needed in attendance.
Define next meeting, you mean Wednesday, or you mean?
Wednesday. Or into next week, what, whatever.
I mean, here's. Yeah, 'cause it, 'cause my concern is, is that, that we'll, we may have questions that come up in the discussion, but,
Mm-hmm.
but the discussion usually generates this stuff, and, and rather than making them sit here.
Okay, okay.
And then we can send the questions back.
Is that what our experience has been in the past, if we need something, we can always get it?
Yeah, yes, 'cause they've been nice enough to be out several nights already.
I'm not sure, Dan, I'll ask Ray about that.
And it will happen again.
For me, that's.
In the month of August.
Oh, yeah. That's where the analysis gets done. I mean, I, it's easy enough, you look through all the numbers, but by the time you get, you know, twenty pages next, and you're looking at where the six forty-one's is compared to where the other ones in the group, and what pair of the actuals. And I know you guys indicated you went through and you made adjustments for actuals, and I'm going by that when I'm looking at it.
But, but we weren't able to do it, I had shared, I wanted the actuals printed on the detail. What we had to do, Dan, was we were going, it was labor-intensive, and it was inefficient, we're going through, we had to say, Ray, can you look up the actuals on this account? I wanted them printed on this. Um, Bonnie had indicated that she thinks we're gonna have that, so when we have
Right.
your final budget, that goes on to the budget committee, I, I don't wanna speak for Bonnie, 'cause she was working with Pentimation, but I think they've got it now. Because I want her, well, I'm.
So, go for it. But that's what the Excel spreadsheet did, and what I was able to do is take the Excel spreadsheet from a previous year, where it had the act- actuals, and merge the two together because of the unique key of the account number. And that's why those, I have ten years of history of all of these numbers, and it's helpful to, to get, at this point, it's, it's gonna be a little late, but.
I'll, I'll ask Ray for an update on that, 'cause I know that's something that, um, that you wanted, Dan.
Yeah.
It'd be good to know.
And Kate has the personnel, we're just saying.
Kate has all the personnel, I'll get a status update on that as well.
Dan, can you, can you crunch it into function number across the district?
Yeah, yeah.
You, you, can, is it easy enough for you to do?
Yeah, but not by Wednesday.
Well, no, 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 no.
Yeah, it is, because one, with the Excel spreadsheet, I think.
Right. 'Cause.
I think Ray actually.
Ray's done it for me before, but it's been a couple of years, and it was a very useful tool.
Oh, it is.
Because, because it allows you to sort of, um, understand both macro and micro.
Yeah, and because of the function, in fact, we do it by function, district line for the MS twenty-seven.
Right.
But what we do is, I break it out, and we look at zero, 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 one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, two oh four, three oh five, and then total it up and see what it looked like.
Yep.
But I know I've, we've updated every day last week, so I'm gonna give you some, so, so look much at this, and I've got a, and this week is not bad, half, or not, but, but then next week's, we. Is it? It's not over, we pass it on.
Hmm.
Yeah. And also, if, um, the board had some general feedback in terms of where you'd like to see the budget come in, maybe a little premature, but that would be direction that we'd like to see if they were.
I think it's a matter of what we wanna take in and put out of it, I think.
Yeah, I, I think it does come down to that, and, and also to echo what Keith said, I think at the end of the day, we really, we have to understand what our targets are and which things are most important. And we can't leave the contracts at the back for a reason.
Well, and I've shared with the staff and all the schools and all of you, I think those two contracts are priority number one.
Mm-hmm.
That's why my thought would be not to have any other warrant articles on. That would be my thought, it's just to, I know, 'cause the voting public gets irritated when there's too many on there, because they think that we're asking for too much, so. I would like to just see the budget and two contracts and call it a day.
In the area.
In the area, exactly, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Right, no financial gap, yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, if it would be fine.
Yeah, if we don't know that.
Right.
If they both know, there's a problem.
If you both know, it's gonna cost more.
And, and will they put that as a little footnote?
No.
You will pay more.
They do that.
Voters' guide.
Voters' guide has to say that.
No, I think too about, you, you know, thinking back to, to the idea of adding the, um, the work out back to mitigate flood risk. The idea of putting that as a warrant, I mean, kinda like what we talked about last year as far as putting the Mountain View Middle School roof on the warrant, we knew that the risk was if it didn't pass, then we wouldn't be able to do it.
That's true.
And then what happened is we were able to figure out a way to, to get the roof done, and I would hate to see something happen where that didn't pass, and then we get the grant, and our hands are tied because.
We didn't, we didn't have permission to do it.
We didn't get permission, so I think that is.
And we had permission not to do it.
Is a risky, is, is a, a risky, um, move as far as the idea of that, that warrant article there, that concept.
I think it is, yeah.
I think it is too, I, for both of those reasons, I think it's, I'm gonna think that, you know. Okay.
Does anyone else have anything they wanna add at this time?
The only thing we can talk about gently and maybe on Wednesday is who wants to be a poll at what time on this one, on election day, Wednesday, December fourth.
Mm-hmm.
Sunday fourth.
Mm-hmm. But have you hoped any?
I took the day off from work, so I can be pretty close.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the day off, too.
I've got some time to spend.
I'll see what I can do, too.
I vote for Bartley, 'cause that's my goal and my goal.
Okay.
Do you know, Jim has, um, assigned a, or chosen a, um, an assistant moderator?
We've been talking to Jim, and we haven't heard from Jim, so.
We talked to him, we talked to him, uh, a week and a half ago or so.
I haven't been to him.
We're gonna see you Wednesday night.
Right, but not since we did the, um.
Not since.
Yeah, we'll grab that on Wednesday, if not tomorrow. Two days.
You also have to count.
Yep.
There is a lot that we have to do, and, and I do want you guys to be aware, um, that we do need to share some information with you, there's, there's, um,
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There certainly is.
Some training that you need to do online.
Mm-hmm.
So that we all understand what our role is, um, on that day, we'll be getting more information, because we have to fill the role of what the selectmen do at, at the elections, on election day. And, and honestly, I don't have a good grasp of what the role of the selectmen are. Um, so we'll get that, but beyond that, there's, there's training, there is online training that we all need to, to do to make sure that we are equipped.
And it's folks.sos.gov, and if you call, we can get you a login ID and a password, and you can get a certificate that says you took the training.
Yeah.
And you can post it on the wall with a nice frame.
I feel happy.
That's wonderful.
I think that, that information.
I just wanna know, does it have antlers on it?
I've been dying for one of those.
I, I think that information's all in here. This is, this is, um, this is from State Department, or Department of State, so, um.
Could be, could be. I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
Imagine you do.
Excellent.
I've got my certificate, so I'm good.
So you're volunteering to do both polling stations or?
I can't.
It sounds like Dan's, he's got this, everybody else.
Dan could be the trainer, like he has a row in the in-house trainer.
I, I'm hearing Dan say, he's got this, everybody go.
That's right.
This is the moderator's job.
So moved.
I mean, I would love, I mean, I'll be around to whatever he needs for him.
I did it for ten years, it's like a training.
So Hank, you know that.
You don't actually have to go on and train, but.
No, 'cause we know that.
No, but there is a, it's, being familiar with the laws, what happens if the moderator comes in and someone has a challenge, what happens if someone doesn't have their ID, because you have to have an ID to grab a ballot? What IDs are valid? Did you know that if you enroll at the dog grooming school, that is a valid student ID because that particular dog grooming school may be registered with the Department of Ed? There's a big thick booklet that.
For, for.
Yeah, there's like two hundred and eight secondary schools that could be get for that particular one, but those are the people who are sitting there at the ballot, those are the people who get the ballot, so if you need to pay for this and say yes or no. Interesting stuff.
I took a pill from last year that you have to have a special area for people who are blind, and you either have to help them if they choose to, or you have to call the state.
I can't say much, so, very involved.
It's not a special area, it's what, what happens is if you have, um,
Now they have to go into a private area.
a person who would like to be assisted, there's a form that needs to be filled out for a given time, and that's what the moderator does. And it doesn't have to, it could be, usually the selectmen are available to assist.
If they choose, otherwise they get on the line and do it themselves, or get online to do it themselves.
If they so choose.
They also do a special booth.
But they do have to have a special booth.
That, we're not putting up the handicap booths, because there's no machine in the background to do this, there's no machine programmed, 'cause that's where you get on the telephone, you dial a special number, and you listen to the ballot and vote, and it comes back to your fax machine that won't be set up. It's expensive, just like the AccuVote machines, if they, we get the ballot in, normally counts it for you, that's like six hundred and fifty dollars to program that one question. And then it's expensive to print the ballots, so it's much easier for us at the end of the day to hand count the ballots.
Mm-hmm.
Two piles, there's a yes pile and a no pile, and then when you're done, you add 'em up. In fact, we've done this at the, um, at our own, uh, first session meetings, where they have, uh, you wanna vote to change the, the particular warrant article, and then we put it on a paper spat, on a piece of paper, and it says yes, no, and you count it.
If you get a turnout like you get in an election, you're gonna be, you're three o'clock in the morning, and it's like, yeah.
Yes, if we do, we even.
I think the expected turnout's about two percent.
Maybe.
When we have these, these off elections, it's about two percent.
How many counters you don't have? And don't say yes.
I'm gonna have nine.
You didn't say us, you just said nine.
That was, that was pretty.
You can say us.
Actually, that's, that's up to Jim, that's Jim's, it really is Jim's job to get the counters. We are actually, uh, the board of recount, if some, if there's a challenge.
Right, we have to automatically do the recount.
We will, we will do the recount, but, um, it should be pretty easy, you have two piles, just make sure they all say yes, and they all say no, and you can count it.
So I think it's like three per, three people per.
There should be, 'cause you have observers.
You've got the, the person who does it, then you've got the observer, and then you have, I'm not sure what the job description, a person number three, but verifying with the observer.
Yes. Usually there are four, there, there are two on one side, there's one on the other.
Can you count?
So they, they, but it's usually the two candidates for the recount, so they agree, I'm counting this for yes, and they agree to put it in the yes pile, I'm counting this for no, that goes in the no pile.
Mm-hmm.
You usually have two people, 'cause when you're done, the first one will count them, handed to the second one, they have to count it again.
I, I'm gonna nominate Chad's count.
What do you got there, Ben?
What are we gonna do if we have any hanging Chad? Or pregnant Chad?
Oh.
If they've checked the ballot, that's up to the moderator, get, that did happen.
So I'm deferring to Jim.
Yes, it did.
We're liking Jim more and more.
My challenge in, in the recount. Process. Make emotional adjournments.
I've been motioned adjourned, seconded by Phillip, all in favor.
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you very much, see you at six o'clock, it is yours, I believe.